Mic check? Good evening. Today is November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it is now six oh five P M. This is an eight-member board appointed by the City of South Fulton's Mayor and City Council to hold public hearings to make recommendations on rezonings, use permits, concurrent variance applications, comp plan use plans, maps, and amendments to the zoning resolution. The applicants and proponents of each case will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present their case. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicants to convince the board that the application should be approved, they may choose to reserve some of that time for rebuttal. Following the proponents' presentation, any individuals in opposition will also have a total of ten minutes to present their position. If multiple people will speak in opposition, you should organize yourselves so that you allow everyone to speak in the ten-minute timeframe. Opposition is not permitted rebuttal time. If you wish to address the commission on a case, you must fill out a comment card and indicate whether you are a proponent or an opponent of a case. If you are not sure whether you are a proponent or an opponent, you must fill out an opponent comment card. The commission will take two votes on each application. The first vote is on the findings effect as presented by staff. The second vote is for approval, denial, or deferral of the application. It is the second vote that determines the board's recommendation to City Council. Please refrain from any verbal outbursts during the public hearing, and please only address the commission during the designated public comment time. Staff, can you please call the roll?
Commissioners, Smith, Vickers.
Here.
Commissioner Perry. Commissioner Reverend Jones. Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Devon.
Here.
Commissioner Price. Commissioner McGeeham. We have quorum.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, you've had a chance to review tonight's agenda. Are there any edits to the agenda? Okay. I would like to add one item to the agenda, and that would be for us to discuss briefly about amending the planning commission rules. If there are no other edits to the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? And I would also like to move that item to the end of the agenda after number three.
I make a move to approve the agenda as sounded.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can I get a motion? My apologies. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Here. I mean, aye.
Use your mic.
Sorry. Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon. The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to move on to the minutes from our last planning commission meeting. Are there any corrections or edits to the minutes, commissioners? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner William.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. And before we start our meeting today, I just want to take just a point of privilege to just make sure that everyone in the audience remembers that early voting is November twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, and we have a runoff here in South Fulton on December second. So all the beautiful faces that came out to vote a few weeks ago, we need those same faces strong on December second to make sure that we have, you know, folks to fill these seats up, and we want to make sure that South Fulton comes out strong. So I appreciate you all for being here today, and we're going to go ahead and move on with our agenda. And the first case is Z twenty-five dash zero thirty-one forward slash Z B twenty-five dash zero zero four. Staff, can you please present the staff report?
Yes, K Z twenty-five dash zero three-one, along with the concurrent variance, C V twenty-five dash zero zero four. The address is forty-eight sixty-five Campbellton Road. The applicant is seeking a rezoning from R three to R four A to develop three single-family residential lots on one point six five acres of land, along with the concurrent variance to reduce, to eliminate the one hundred, the one hundred-foot buffer from section four zero five dot zero one. Staff is recommending approval for both of them.
Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead now and open up the public hearing. Is the applicant present today? If you can state your first and last name and address for the record.
Bavarian Grundy, thirty-two ninety-nine, Shanty Court, Powder Springs.
Thank you so much. You can go ahead with your presentation.
And so we are seeking to eliminate, as he was saying, the buffer between the City of Atlanta and South Fulton and to change the zoning from R three to R four A so that we can get two, one lot on the road of Sandtown and then another lot on the road of Campbellton Road. And so there is already an existing house on Campbellton Road. It sits on about two acres. And so we're just trying to subdivide so we can build a house on each side and then remodel the house that is in the center.
Thank you so much. Is that all for your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sweet. You can take a seat.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any cards?
We have one more card that is for and no card against. The speaker is Jerome Brown.
Okay, Jerome, you can come on up. Okay, can you say your first, last name and address for the record?
Jerome Brown, thirty-nine thirty-five Cypress Point Drive, Union City, Georgia.
Thank you.
I'm for it. I'm not sure what all I'm supposed to say.
Can you speak a little closer in the mic?
I'm for the, for the rezoning. That was it. I didn't really have a lot to say. Okay, it's for them.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we can now close this public hearing. There are no other cards. Commissioners, we've heard the applicant and we've heard staff's recommendation. Do you have any questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Okay. Commissioner Devon, I recognize you.
I have a question to the applicant.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding that you're going to, there's one house that you said sits on two acres.
It's about two point one acres.
And the new, the two new developments, each of them are sitting on how many acres?
It would be about a quarter of an acre. One would be twelve thousand square feet, and the other one would be fourteen thousand square feet. That's why we needed the R four A because of that, the, the lot that sits to the left that would come out on Sandtown, on Sandtown Creek, it would only have twelve thousand, about twelve thousand three hundred square feet. And so I don't, I think that's about point three acres, something like that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any other questions for the applicant or staff? Commissioner Williams, I recognize you.
Unless I'm missing something, this was deferred. Okay, this was deferred from September sixteenth, right? Do we know why, unless I'm not seeing it?
Matthew, can you, you want to let him speak? Okay, go ahead. You can speak about it.
We had not sent all the postcards out yet when we came the, in September, and so we sent all the postcards out before, that's why we had to defer.
Your community meeting you're speaking of?
Yes, ma'am. We had the community meeting and we sent the postcards and then had the community meeting.
Okay, and how many people arrived to your community meeting?
Two people.
Two people.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? We're good? Okay. Well, it looks like we need to go ahead and take a vote here and just want to make sure I don't have any questions here. I think we're good. Okay. So yeah, so let's go ahead and take a vote on, first of all, it's going to be staff finding as a fact, if I can get a motion. Okay. And this is going to be for the first case?
Yes.
Okay. So that it be, can you, can you call the case number out when you do it? Because we want to have to do two.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Sure. Motion to approve staff's finding and facts of Z two-five dash zero three-one. That's that, is it both or just, just that one? Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. So that passes. And the next vote is going to be for approval, denial, or deferral of K Z twenty-five dash zero thirty-one. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Z two-five dash zero three-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. And we're going to take our vote for the, the concurrent variance, C V twenty-five dash zero zero four. Can I get a motion to approve or deny staff's findings of fact?
I make a motion to approve staff's findings of fact for Z twenty-five.
C V.
C V twenty-five dash zero zero four.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. And we are next, we are going to take our next vote for approval, denial, or deferral for C V twenty-five dash zero zero four. Is there a motion?
I motion to, I move to approve C V two-five dash zero zero four.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Devon.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. So both of those have passed, and they will move on to the December ninth Mayor Council meeting for final vote. And we will now move on to our next case, which is going to be U twenty-five dash zero thirteen. Staff, can you please sound the report?
Yes, U twenty-five dash zero one-three. The address is one twenty Kane Wood Court. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for it, to allow for a group residence for children in a C U P in the old National Overlay District, again at one twenty-five Kane Wood Road. Staff is recommending approval conditional. Those conditions are that the special use permit is not transferable and that the permit is required to maintain a valid South Fulton business license to operate a special use permit for the group home. Group residence.
Can you say the last condition again?
That the permit is required to maintain a valid South Fulton business license to operate a special use permit for a group residence. I know your staff report has that error in it. It should be a group residence.
Oh, okay. Because I was like, hold on now. No worries. Okay. Appreciate that. Okay, so we can go ahead and open up the public hearing for the case. Is the applicant present? Hi. How are you today? Good. Can you please state your first and last name and address for the record?
My name's Early Rocket, forty-seven oh five, agency trace. I am requesting a special use permit to allow for a six-to-nine residence group home, maternity, second chance home at one twenty Kane Wood Court. This property is already designated as a CUP, C U P area designated for multi-use family residents and different types, and that's encouraged there. What I'm asking for is that if I have up to six residents, that I be allowed to have that number in the, on the property. The property currently is approximately point seven nine acres. It has twenty-three hundred square feet in there and six bedrooms and ample space for the number of residents that I'm requesting.
Thank you so much. Are there any cards?
So we had one card that was for, which was the applicant, and we have eleven cards against.
Okay.
I will call those names out. Please form a line behind the podium. Mrs. Jones. Rose Fans. Again, please make your way to the podium where you hear your name called. Last name Hughes. Horse. First name is Horse. First name Marcia. Randolph Wright. Anthony Davis. Last name Hector. Jimmy Roll. Ross Mosley. Alan Christopher. And Ms. Asbury. If you do wish to speak against and you haven't filled out a card, please come see me for a card and then join the line.
Thank you. Sir, you can proceed to the podium, and please state your first and last name and address for the record.
Horace Copperidge. Seven one thirty, Berlin Drive, runs off Kemble Mill Road. I was one of the few people who were at the meeting in front of the house at one twenty East Kane Wood Court on October twenty-ninth, and I admire Ms. Rocket for having the cards sent out to the residents, which is the appropriate thing to do. And that brings up another concern. There are some more, there are several other houses in residency which are set up, but there was no protocol whatsoever. They already, I can give you the address, it's twenty-nine oh six Forest Side Lane, sixty-seven fifteen Kemble Mill Road at Adena and thirty thirty Forest Side Lane. I can give you that later on. But these houses are, they are, they are, to me, they are halfway houses. And they're not, they hadn't, the, the, the residents didn't know anything about this as opposed to what Ms. Rocket did. She sent out the cards, which is a protocol. We just found this out. And anyway, I'm definitely, I, I don't know to what extent I, I agree with what Ms. Rocket is doing, but it brings up another thing. She lives over in Cascade area, and she wants to put it in our neighborhood. And we want to know a good answer for that. Why is that?
Thank you. How many minutes are on the clock?
Seven minutes. Seven minutes and fifty-nine seconds.
How many minutes and how many seconds? Twenty-something, something like that. Okay. So there's only about seven minutes left on the clock. So, and that is for everyone. So you may want to, you know, think about that wisely as you guys come up. Okay.
My name is Marcia Clementor. I'm the president of the Pine Tree Meadows Home Association, which is the, where this house is located. And I want to begin by saying that I understand the need for supportive services for these vulnerable, vulnerable children in our state. My concerns today are not about the population being served, but about the appropriateness of placing a facility of this type within a single-family residential subdivision. My comments are based solely on land use impact, zoning intent, and community welfare, which this board is obligated to consider. Number one, the proposed use is not consist, consistent with single-family zoning. The applicant is requesting permission to house five to six pregnant minors, but on the paper here, it says six to nine pregnant minors, from the ages of thirteen to eighteen, plus their infants, along with twenty-four-hour rotating staff, counselors, case managers, and other D facts related personnel. This is not the functioning of a typical household. It is a quasi-institutional group, home operated inside a neighborhood designed for stable single-family occupancy. Approving this request would fundamentally alter the character and intent of the zoning district. Number two, significant increase in daily traffic, parking needs, and activity. A home of this type will require multiple, multiple staff vehicles for shift changes, daily or weekly visits from D facts, caseworkers, transportation vans for medical appointments. Remember, these teenagers are pregnant. Deliveries, support services, and oversight personnel. This is not the functioning of a typical household. It is a quasi-institutional group. Approving this would, okay, now, place my place. A home of this type will require multiple staff vehicles, as I said earlier, potentially more emergency medical responses due to pregnancy and infant-related issues. This volume of activity exceeds what our streets and parking areas were designated, designed to support, and will impact the quiet residential nature of the subdivision. Safety, emergency response, and neighborhood disruption. We are being asked to accept a facility that houses pregnant minors, newborn infants. Oh, boy. A minute. Wait a minute. What happened to my newborn infants? Okay. My thing went away. Okay. Late night activity, emergency medical calls, unexpected behavioral issues, because these are troubled teenagers, so we don't know what's going to happen at night. So basically, we absolutely ask that it, it's denied. Thank you.
Thank you so much. How many more minutes do we have?
Four minutes and thirty-seven seconds.
Thank you so much. Please state your first and last name and address for the record.
Ren, Ren, Randolph Wright, sixty-eight twenty-five Kemble Mill Road. I'm here to, in opposition to the housing, and I see the rest of my time to my neighbors.
Thank you. Please state your first and last name and address for the record.
Cynthia Jones, twenty-nine oh one Forest Side Lane.
Thank you.
I am here to speak against the proposed situation with the homes, but my connection is the group home that has been opened at twenty-nine oh six, which is directly in the cul-de-sac where I live. We had no knowledge that whoever bought the home has made it a ten-bedroom facility with different people coming in and going out. We don't know these people. Neither have we been apprised to what happened. There have already been two police incidents, fights, and we live in a cul-de-sac. I'm concerned the decisions are being made based on our properties that we have no knowledge of, and when we try to make contact, it's a haphazard not concern. However, guns don't have names, they don't have bullets, and we do not approve of parking in the middle of the street. There's no place for all these additional facilities and the homes of people, the cars in the middle of the street. We don't want to see a head-on collision or a child being killed because the driver, the driveways are not extended or open to allow for ten people to live in one home. We ask that you please consider the decisions that are being made on our behalf without our knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Gail Hector. My mother is Betty Jones. She's deceased, and I'm one of the representatives for the family, and I've talked with my brothers and sisters, and they've not agreed, they've agreed not to, to approve this, please. The burden of trying to take care of my mom's house and my own house and all of this and having, having to worry about what's going on surrounding your property, and you can't tell what's going on, and we've got a problem with having straightened out with the motorcycles and the cars flying through the neighborhood with speed breakers, and that's the joy for them. But we hear it at all hours in the different times. So I am representing the Jones family. Betty Jones is the name that the house is under. My brother is the representative person for her, and I'm, I'm the one that's paying the bills.
Thank you so much. And can you also state the address for the record?
One ten Kane Wood Court East. When I first heard about it, I was told it was for, where they would have When I first heard about it, I was told it was for, where they would have, where you rent it out for people coming out of the country and stuff like that. But then they came in, the women that spoke were very nice, and they said what their intentions were, so somebody's, a lot of the information is not coming out straight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
How you doing today?
Before you start, let me, how many, how much time do we have on the clock?
One minute and twenty-six seconds.
Sweet, we're almost done. Okay, I think we can, you got it in one minute?
Okay.
Let's do it.
I'm gonna co-sign, my name is Alan Christopher.
An address, please.
100 Kane Wood Court East, right in the same cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And I'm gonna have to co-sign with our homeowner's president. She stated very eloquently about why we don't want it, and I'm against it, especially being in that cul-de-sac. So I'll keep it really short and brief.
Thank you so much, sir.
Hello, Chella Asbury, 140 Kane Wood Court East. As my neighbor Alan and the Jones family, we are the ones that will be most impacted by this decision and your decision, and it will greatly affect our properties. The cul-de-sac is quiet. We actually had a renter there that the prior owner, investor, which they are taking over our neighborhood as well, wouldn't sell to. But we already have issues with people, the young gentlemen, doing donuts in our cul-de-sac, parking, blocking our driveways, and just to co-sign on the reasons that our president stated. All of those reasons, it's not made for that. You guys should come out and actually look at the area. It's just, I support what they're doing, but I don't support it there. The makeup of the neighborhood and our cul-de-sac just is not going to accommodate that without it negatively impacting those of us in the neighborhood, especially the homeowners. And there's our neighbor that wasn't able to make it, who actually live in that cul-de-sac, so I am voting no.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner?
Rebuttal time.
I was still gonna close it, but I'm still gonna ask the applicant to come back up. You still?
Nine minutes and six seconds for rebuttal.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize he had time left on the clock. I mean, she had time left on the clock, my apologies. I see what you're saying, got it. You can come on back up. Thank you for that correction.
I want to thank everyone for coming and sharing their insight and reinforcing what we talked about at our community meeting. In the participant response, I addressed each of these issues, including the concern about property values as to having the home there. I presented and provided in the document information around HUD research, as well as looking at the various types of homes that can be within a community, and what really drives property values, not necessarily the people that are living in the home, but whether or not that home is maintained, and the maintenance of it is appropriately and continuously monitored. Why this neighborhood was also addressed and addressed fully in the response. Lots of things were taken into consideration as I looked at the various properties. The property at 120 Kane Wood Court East is appropriately zoned for multifamily use. It's already zoned as that. Their special use request is for if there are six or more youth in the home. The home is centrally located near medical, as well as school facilities, that many of the youth may be coming from, so that would mean they would not have to change as it relates to relationships that they already have established. More detail is included in the report, and I don't want to read through all of it. Traffic and parking, there's currently, and the way the parking is there, there's currently the way the neighbors park. They park, double-park in the driveway. Four cars can be parked in the driveway without obstructing any of the roadway. There's an additional two-car garage that can also house two additional cars, so six cars can be parked on the facility without being in the driveway or in any public area obstructing any kind of access. There were concerns around, I think, an incident that happened that wasn't brought up. But I certainly understand and respect the concerns of the neighborhood. I have tried to respond as appropriately as a neighbor would in response to the concerns and the questions that they have. In addition to sending out the postcards, prior to closing on the property, I posted a public notification in the Fulton neighborhood, trying to make sure that additional information was out there even before I closed on the property. This was posted from July 15th until the time I closed on August 21st, and I had no response at all. I did send out the postcards to all of the neighbors within a one-mile radius of the identified property. And of course, as you can see, got response from that, and I really appreciate it and support it. There are no homes similar to the home that I'm asking for, for a second-chance maternity home within a one-mile radius of this particular address, which is the requirement from the county. What I'm asking for does not violate any of the city or state, federal regulations. The women that I'm, or young women, that I'm asking to support in this home as relates to fair housing laws, of course, there cannot be discrimination against them or the fact that we are there providing that service for women who need that particular housing and support. As they try to transition from a decision, whether they made it voluntarily or not, we still want to help support those youth. There are currently youth in the neighborhood. I've been in the neighborhood after hours. I've been to, there's a park close by. I've been to all of those, trying to make sure that, you know, what we may face as it relates to working with the young women, helping them to understand where there's safe issues, helping them to be aware of their surroundings and the situation. So I feel like I've given as, you know, much information as I can. I don't know about the other homes that they're talking about. I only know about what I intend to do at 120 Kane Wood Court, and I'm open to any further questions or discussion.
Thank you so much. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing now. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant or staff at this time? Yes, okay. I'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Devon, and I'll go on down. Oh, you're gonna go first, okay, okay. Commissioner Williams, I recognize you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a couple questions for the applicant. My first question has to do with your service experience, okay? Do you currently operate a group home in another part of Atlanta?
Yes, our family actually owns two group homes. It's in the Columbus area, but it serves, it actually serves males. My background, I'm a family and women's nurse practitioner. I've worked with children in the foster care system. I've led the benefit coverage for those children, work with DFACS, and just know that we need to try to provide as much support and service as we can to the youth as they try to make a transition from being in a difficult situation to hopefully being moved toward a more productive relationship within a community, as well as within a home environment.
Okay, and specifically with your experience, have you worked, have you seen the day-to-day that takes place in the group homes? Meaning the twenty-four-hour, all of the things?
We have oversight. Yes, I apologize. We have oversight for all of that, all of the staffing, the day-to-day, making sure that food, medical care, appointments are kept. We have responsibility for all of those.
Right, so that would require additional cars then? Additional cars?
The, we usually have vans, and so with...
Additional vans?
We have vans, and those vans can be parked in the garage. There are two spaces. There's a two-car garage that still leaves four spaces in the actual driveway that people can park.
Okay, 'cause I don't want to get into the weeds of that.
Right.
But I imagine if you have six women or youths at the home, they're going to need space and storage, so I would imagine that would be in the garage. But I could be wrong. My second question is, your personal preference? Would you want this in your personal cul-de-sac?
Because we don't know what goes on in the homes of everyone who lives by us. I don't necessarily know, even where I live, what actually happens within those homes. The purpose and the people within those homes are not the primary issue, at least for me. It's whether or not they are good neighbors, whether or not they, some of the same things that have been spoken about, are they creating chaos? The youth won't have cars, so they won't be out, you know, conducting donuts in the driveway. From our experience, most of the challenges with the youth are within the home. They're not out in the streets canvassing the neighborhood to destroy or look for opportunities in the neighborhood to do anything. If there's anything broken or anything like that, it's usually within the home. When they're, when we have them out, whether that's, you know, in the vans or traveling back and forth to school, that's not where the issues occur. It's usually within the home and not outside of the home.
And my last question, what opportunity are you providing the neighbors?
I think at the end of the day, we all have to come together to provide for the youth who are less, who are disadvantaged in some way. These youth have been, for whatever reason, they have been placed in a situation that they may or may not have voluntarily agreed to be in. However, their situation should not dictate that they don't have the opportunity to continue to be able to move forward and be productive citizens and be supported, both them and their infants.
Okay, thank you so much. I recognize Commissioner Devon, whom this property is actually, is actually in her district, District Six.
Thank you. I appreciate your information you've shared. But, and I understand what you're trying to do with the youth. You are to be committed for that. However, we're talking about individuals who have purchased homes, living in this area. And they're, what they have communicated, if I've heard them correctly, is that you're trying, you're adding this different residence to their established community, which is a group home, and homes that they have purchased and possibly purchased for a reason. It could be their final purchase, things of that nature, and trying to keep their community intact. Understanding that you're asking for a special use permit to allow this residence home within this already-established community has posed an area of concern. There will be traffic, whether it's a two-car garage or not. There will be in and out. There will be things going on. There are things that are in your control and things that are not in your control. So you are adding to this cul-de-sac traffic and a list of things, and things that they have shared, things they are concerned about. So, and you said you've heard them before. And in hearing them before, have you made any adjustments? Or have you considered their needs as homeowners?
Exactly, and that's kind of what I shared in my response. I understand that they have concerns, they have fears about what could happen as it relates to having this type of home there. But based on my experience, the homes, the group home doesn't devalue the property. It doesn't cause a significant disturbance in the neighborhood. The traffic that will be there, yes, there will be twenty-four-seven coverage. There will be staff who will be maintaining and monitoring the home, just as it would if there was a dialysis patient in a home where there was medical crews that come in and out. And even the neighborhood that I live in, my neighbor across the street is on dialysis. There's emergency vehicles, there's vehicles coming in all the time. That's the nature of the neighborhood. That's a part of what we live with and exist in. It's not unique to any particular neighborhood. At 120 Kane Wood Court, of course, it will be there. My intent, and as I've shared with them, I want to be a good neighbor. However, we can work through that. I'm not trying to devalue the property because I own property there now as well. So I, yes.
Thank you so much for your rebuttal. I'm not talking about an individual that may be a dialysis person. I'm talking about multiple individuals to change the dynamic of a community to add a group home. I want to make sure we stay on the right track of what we're talking about. So, and they are asked, and they have asked that you not change the dynamic of their neighborhood. Yes, one, somebody in that cul-de-sac could have a medical emergency, but we are not talking about six to nine pregnant youth, twenty-four-hour care, and staff, and vans, and things of that nature. That's what I'm saying. And I thank you so much, I appreciate talking with you, and I will just lend my time to my colleague.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna go ahead and ask a couple questions as well, and then my colleagues also have some questions. But my first question is, how long are these young ladies actually staying in the home? Like, what does the matriculation look like from them arriving there? How many months pregnant are they? What is that, where are these young ladies coming from? Are they in South Fulton? I have so many questions. I guess my first question would be, how long, what is the matriculation of them actually being in the home?
The women can come into the home as early as thirteen years of age to eighteen. They can stay, if they come in at thirteen, they can stay until they're eighteen. If they come in at seventeen, they stay until they're eighteen. So the endpoint is eighteen. Generally, that's the way that that occurs, or as a general rule. However, a youth could come in at thirteen and leave at fourteen or fifteen because they have other supports and resources that they can utilize. They're utilizing the home to help kind of develop and grow to be able to move to that next stage.
Okay, thank you. And then, did you say it would be six young ladies at a time?
The special use permit is between six and nine because that's the way the ordinance is set up. The intent, based on the space that's there, is between four to five. And if, if for some reason there is six, I want to make sure that I'm in compliance with the ordinance as it relates to South Fulton. But the intent has always been four to six. And even in my response, I think there was one of the constituents who indicated that the sign does say six to nine because that's the ordinance and that's what I'm asking for. However, the intent is to not have, we're definitely never gonna have nine. That I can affirmatively say. Generally, between four to six is what the intent is for that particular home.
Okay, I guess I'm thinking now, I'm just thinking about, you know, six parents or six moms, and then I'm thinking about six kids, so that's twelve. And then they have to go outside, they're not gonna be in the house all day, so on the weekends. And I'm just thinking about all the extra things that are gonna be added. And then I'm also thinking about what our constituents are saying here about the donuts and the speeding and the stuff that's going on. To me, sometimes, it sounds like some of them were conveying that that cul-de-sac is maybe... that that cul-de-sac is maybe not very safe to have maybe a lot of young kids right there. So I'm just, I'm just trying to picture the amount of kids, the parents, the staff. It just seems like a lot.
Yeah.
Um, it, it seems like a lot.
Yeah, and that's only if, when a woman, or when one of the youth delivers the baby, that the baby stays there. The, the baby does not have to stay there because they're not in DFAX custody. The resident is in DFAX custody, but the baby is not. So there could be a mother who delivers and that baby is then, um, a relative or someone else takes the baby. So it's not necessarily a, a one-to-one relationship. We have, um, screening, we're able to screen the residents who come into the home. We can determine, you know, we, we, we have three residents who are at the, the same stage, just gestational age. We can determine which members, which one of those residents we, we want to take, which one we, we don't. And based on the dynamics of what's happening in the home, we can determine and, and, um, kind of control that volume. So it's not necessarily that there will be 12 people in the home. The goal is that there's never more than eight to nine people in the home. That's including the, the child. The, again, the baby is not a part of DFAX custody. It's only the, the mother or the resident.
Thank you. And I had one more question for you, and I just lost my train of thought of what that question was. Um, gosh, what was that question? It might come back to me. So in the meantime, I will go ahead and recognize, um, Commissioner Jefferson, and I'll come back to my question.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one question with all the opposition. Have you thought about any other locations other than this, this location?
Well, financially, and because I, I posted prior to trying to make sure that even before I invested any money into this property, that if there were, it was any opposition, that I would at least hear something. And I heard absolutely nothing. That does not negate what I'm hearing tonight. It simply says, I was trying as hard as I could to not invest in a property where there may be opposition. However, I'm now, I'm a neighbor. I, I'm, I'm a neighbor in that, um, cul-de-sac. I, I have, um, a property that I would like to, to utilize to help support, uh, young women who are pregnant and transitioning to adulthood.
Is that an alternative that, that you would, after all opposition has taken place here, that you think about any other location? I know some money has been spent.
Yes, I, I, I would, yes, I would, I would look at other locations. I'm, I'm not trying to disrupt the neighborhood. If, if we could work something out where if, if they want to purchase the property, then certainly we can, we can talk about how we can, can, uh, resolve the issue in that regard.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, I recognize you. Yeah, sure, okay. Um, I do remember my question now. What was the intent, could, because you knew you needed a special use permit? Or, uh, do you own the home right now?
I own the home now.
Okay. I guess my question is, is what was your initial intent? Because what if you don't get a special use permit? Wha- what was your initial intent with this property?
That, the, the, because it's already zoned as a cup area, anything, the ordinance is, if I have six to nine, if I have less than that, based on my understanding of the regulations, I can have less than that without a special use permit.
Okay, um, staff, is that correct? If, if you guys can verify that, that would be great.
Real work to verify that, yes.
Thank you. They're gonna verify it. Uh, Commissioner Jones, I recognize you.
Thank you. Ms. Early, why can't let me first commend you and your family for the heart of the work of what you do. Um, I serve on the board of Kerry Steel Pits Home, which is the oldest African-American orphanage in the southeast and perhaps, um, on, on this side of, of the United States. And we've had our challenges. We sit on about 20 acres, uh, on Fairburn Road. And we have several individual homes and whatnot, but we sit away and, you know, we, we're really cloistered, um, and gated from, uh, from, from the community. We're not right next door to someone. Can you tell me, you said you had properties in Columbus. Um, can you tell me about those properties?
Those properties are located in neighborhoods. Again, we're not, you're right, we're not, because we're, um, small, we, we try to keep the kids within neighborhoods. We want them to interact with neighbors, we want them to be a part of-
You want to normalize them.
Right, exactly. It's a, it's a part of, of being a family. And some of them, as you well know, have not had that opportunity to be a part of, of a stable family. So our intent is, again, not to be disruptive in the neighborhood, but to be a part of that neighborhood and to help build. Again, I hear the, the concerns, and anytime there's misinformation or fear, we, we will always respond to that. I, I, I certainly understand it. I will do whatever I can to help, um, mitigate that. That's, that's all that I can say, I can, I can do, I can't. I, I don't know, you know, what else I, I can do to, to try to, um, make that be any different than it already is.
So help us understand, Michelle has a baby at 13. And she wants to keep, she's in DFAX.
She's in DFAX custody.
Custody. And she wants to keep her child. That child then stays in the home.
The child could stay in the home, yes.
Now, is it, is Michelle ever allowed to go out and venture? Can she go to the mall? Can she go to the movies?
Based on the, the, um, agreements with DFAX, because DFAX is the custodial parent of children in their custody.
Right.
So, um, Michelle fictitiously could go, go out, um, but usually that's chaperone. It's either with the DFAX case manager, or it's with someone DFAX has authorized that the, the youth can go out. The same, uh, applies to anyone coming to the home. DFAX has to say, yes, these are the people who can come to the home. Does that mean that, that boyfriends and all their friends and whomever, school friends can come to the home? The answer is, is no. We would, we have rules and regulations as well that we have set up. So what, what can happen is that child in the, the custody can, can go to, um, go to visit, um, say, a family member. An aunt, an uncle, one of their other relatives in their home. They can go to, uh, they're not going to the mall by themselves. We would go to the mall as a group. We go to the libraries as a group. So it's not like they would be out, uh, totally unsupervised at, at any point in time. And that's also based on what DFAX, uh, has, as it relates to each individual child and, and what they're doing, uh, as, as a part of the, the care and custody that they're in.
So if Michelle went to Uncle Robert, not Nancy's house, and hooked up with some friends in that neighborhood, let's say Michelle got pregnant again, would she then be, would she be put out of your, your home, or?
She could be transitioned to another home. She doesn't necessarily, she wouldn't be put out of a home. She could be transitioned to another home, or she could stay in the home with, with us. We have rules and regulations about how many children they, we can have or that, uh, resident can have, that youth can have when they're there with us. And that's generally one.
So my last thought of question, is the reason why I, I mentioned the acreage for Kerry Steel Pits was really for the children's safety. And the fact that 10 people, or 20 people, or, I mean, uh, 12 people or 18 people, uh, would have, you know, some space.
Right.
Um, so I, I, I do want to hearken back to what Commissioner Jefferson, uh, offered. And, um, again, commending your work and understanding the zoning here. But just really thinking about the impact, uh, to this neighborhood and the impact to you and the impact to your residents as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Devon, I recognize you.
Thank you once again. I just have a, a quick question. You, you, you mentioned a couple of times that you made a posting before purchasing this residence. And what did it say? It, it basically was a letter, uh, introducing that, um, there was a proposed, uh, second chance home coming to, uh, the area that they had, they, uh, people had the opportunity to outreach and, and ask questions or provide feedback. Uh, a copy of the letter was included in the, in the packet, uh, or the, uh, public notification is how it was, uh, submitted. It was included in the packet, I'm not sure if it's, it's in there or not, but there was a, a copy of the notification. And I, I shared that notification with the residents as well.
So you sent this letter out to the residents in the community that there's, and with the address on it, saying that there's a possibility that a group resident- I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, it was posted in the Fulton Neighbor, which is the neighborhood newsletter for Fulton. Um, I think, uh, College Park Cobb, it, it has multiple counties that it covers. And South Fulton is one of those counts.
So that I will not, um, continue with this particular topic, I want to be clear. You said, did you or did you not send the letter to the residents?
Yes, a postcard was also sent to the residents. That's, that's what they received, uh, individually. South Fulton sent me a list of all of the residents' addresses within a one-mile radius of 120 Cane Wood Court. And from those addresses, there were 3,700 of them on this Excel spreadsheet. I sent out postcards to every one of those addresses, even if there were duplications, uh, and there were. I sent out a postcard with information on it related to, uh, the, the public meeting that we had on the 29th, this meeting, as well as the mayor council meeting that comes up in December.
No, I'm referring to, you said, before you purchased-
Right.
You notified the community. So what I'm, what I'm asking you is, did you, before you purchased this property, you said you notified everyone and you did not get a response?
I posted in the Fulton Neighbor, would you like to?
No, I don't, I'm trying, I-
I, I'm saying what I did was I posted a notification in the, uh, community newsletter indicating that this was, um, coming and this was a proposed, uh, option for, for this particular property at this address.
Okay, I just want to, uh, understand, so you did not send that particular-
No, it did not go to, right.
Thank you very much, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much, and I, I'm finished with my question.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I think I found the answer already, but y'all might have it too. But from what I'm reading, and just the knowledge I know from planning is that even if she's CUP, she still has to get a special use permit, right? Even if it was under the amount, because that's even what the public participation plan says as well in here. So even though she has, maybe she doesn't have the amount that she wants to have in the home, she was still gonna have to get a special use permit, even though it's zoned properly, to actually run the facility. Is that right?
So let me answer in a roundabout way.
Sweet.
So, um, as mentioned earlier, on our use table, which is section two, uh, section 207.06, on our use table, which we are closely aligned with state regulations, we only have options for six to nine, or 10 or more. Those will require a special use permit. So from our understanding, they're only allowed to have a minimum of six from the, from a state standpoint. So that's why we don't, um, address anything under six, because from our standpoint, it wouldn't be allowed anyway. So six is the minimum, and that's why on our use table, we start at six to nine and then 10 or more.
So overall, you're saying that at the end of the day, she still would have needed a special use permit, correct?
You're saying if she's under six?
You're saying that South Fulton starts at six?
The state starts at six.
Okay, the state starts at six. So South Fulton only recognizes starting at six?
Correct.
So she still needs a special use permit, right?
Correct.
Regardless?
Right.
Okay, so even being under six, would she still need the special use permit?
We don't address that, we'll have to contact our legal department for that.
Got it.
We start at six.
So, okay, overall, she needs a special use permit. Any group home needs a special use permit.
Correct.
Got it, perfect, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, are there any other questions for the applicant or staff? No? Okay, well, we can go ahead and take our first vote. Let me go back here. Uh-oh, excuse me. And our first vote is gonna be on staff finding a fact, and that's gonna be for case U25-013. Is there a motion? For approval, denial?
I approve, uh, the staff's finding of facts for case U25-013.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. And next, we're gonna go ahead and vote for approval, denial, or deferral of U25-013. Is there a motion?
I have a motion to deny U25-013, um, Cane Wood Court East for the special use permit to allow group residents, children in the cup-
Second.
-community.
Say that second again.
Second.
Say it, okay, perfect. It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. So this case will be moved forward to the, uh, December 9th mayor and council meeting to be heard then for a final vote. And we have one more case. And this will be for, well, we actually technically have three cases, but it's for one property. So we have case Z25-03, uh, 033, U25-014, and CDP25-012. Staff, can you please sign the report?
Yes, case Z25-003, along with a special use permit, U25-014, along with a comprehensive plan development amendment, which is, uh, CDP25-012. The address is Zero Campbellton Fairburn Road. The applicant is seeking a rezoning from AG1, which is our agricultural district, to C2, which is our general commercial district, to allow, to, along with a special use permit to allow for a shopping center with a convenience store with gasoline pumps. The applicant is also seeking a future land use amendment from agriculture neighborhood to community live-work. Staff is recommending denial for all three requests.
Thank you so much, Matthew. Is the applicant present today? Okay, thank you so much. And we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. And if you can go ahead and state your first and last name and address for the record.
I sure will. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission and staff. My name is Henri Washington, 1201 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30309. Honored to be back in South Fulton and to represent MK Energy, an African-American-owned energy company, uh, that is seeking to rezone a 3.61 acre parcel of land along Campbellton Fairburn Road. It's important to say out front that we met with the community and, uh, we know that there are gas stations in this community that have owners that don't live here, don't care about the residents here, and don't maintain quality development. And so our goal is to develop a low-intensity, neighborhood-serving, uh, C-store that includes complementary commercial uses and accessory pumps along, uh, what we consider a commercial corridor, or what we consider a bridge corridor bordering, uh, the city, uh, Union City and nearby surrounding residential properties. Our goal here is pretty simple. We think that that particular area of land is slated to become more commercial, and we want to give the community and provide the city an opportunity to put a unique type of use that serves the neighbors, whether it's fresh food and vegetables, coffee, uh, commercial uses, and also neighborhood-serving, uh, C-store with fuel pumps. Uh, what, a lot of what we heard from the community is that the nearby gas station isn't very well maintained. There's trash, there's concern with violence and, uh, it being a nuisance. But from our position and our perspective, at introducing new, well-thought-out, commercial uses adds the competition that is necessary to encourage other people to step their game up when it comes to what they do in the city of South Fulton. Um, we also recognize that, uh, there is a, a lot of surrounding residential uses and there are concern from traffic, but, uh, the city of South Fulton is ably putting a lot of capital improvements along that corridor with roundabouts. And from our perspective- From our perspective, increasing D cell lanes and ensure, including D cell lanes and traffic mitigation, we're happy to work with the city in order to address some traffic concerns. Essentially, anything that is put there absent the unimproved property as it is will increase traffic. The question is, who's going to partner with the city in order to put a development there that complements what the neighbors might need when it comes to commercial uses? There are other things that I'm happy to address, but with that, I'm happy to pause if the commission asks questions now, or I can continue, or do we wait to get questions on the back end?
Thank you. We'll address the questions shortly.
Okay, perfect. And I just, a final note on each one of the requests. So the, there is one quest for the rezoning that changes it from AG. All the surrounding properties are agricultural and that is considered residential. Part of our goal here with upzoning it is to partner with local agricultural uses in the area to potentially provide those resources to the community. Secondarily, the special use permit is required when it comes to having a C store with fuel pumps. That's just the nature of what the city of South Fulton requires. And then finally, of course, the future land use map allows us to kind of, again, have that comprehensive look in adding other uses other than just that, that commercial use. We are under no illusions about the community's concerns about the C store and the fuel pumps. What we did hear, though, was a desire of sort of things that are nearby that could be useful for them, useful for the neighbors. And so we are happy to have a constructive conversation about ways that we might be able to partner with the city and the community to say, don't do's, do do's. So for example, we have no intention of putting smoke shops, vape shops, or anything that would be a nuisance or an eyesore, or coin laundry. What we do plan on doing again is juice, uh, juice shop, fresh fruit, fresh fruit and vegetables, adding sidewalks to the property. And then finally, again, because it is in a border section and it becomes the great gateway to that Cedar Grove overlay district, part of that property is already designated for the city, uh, Union City. So you got a public storage across the street. And so this area is already unfortunately, because of where it sits, more commercial. The question is what comes there and how we can make sure that it is done hand in hand with the city and the residents. And with that, I'll pause. I look forward to hearing from our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much. How much time is left on the clock for him?
He has five minutes and fifty-eight seconds left.
Thank you so much. Do we have any cards?
So we have the one card for, which was the applicant, and we have nine cards against.
Okay, thank you so much. If you want to go ahead and start calling those folks up, so.
Alrighty, so I'll call your name. Please start to form a line in front of the podium. Donna Sanders. Last name Thompson. Last name Smith. Corey Smith and Kim Marie Smith. Donna Gums. Last name Lorette Williams. Cedar Williams. David Kinzer. Last name McKenzie.
When you come up to the podium, everyone, same as for the last case, please state your first and last name and your address for the record. I appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Donna Sanders, seven sixty-nine Dove Lane. I was one of the applicants or one of the people that attended the November fifth meeting, and I have thought long and hard about this particular project. Ninety-two, Highway ninety-two, from say Douglasville all the way down to South Fulton Parkway, the traffic is gridlocked as far as the eye can see. Mr. Washington was correct. They are putting two roundabouts on, one is on De Mooney Road and the other one is on Jones Road. So now the purpose of a roundabout is to slow the traffic down. The traffic is already slowed down without the roundabouts. We have two traffic lights that are currently there. My concern is if I am coming northbound from Publix and this particular project is across the street from the public storage, that's going to further delay traffic for people trying to make a left-hand turn into that area. My main concern is safety. Ninety-two, like I said, as far as the eye can see, the traffic is gridlocked. No emergency units can get through right now. There is no sidewalks. There's ditches on that side of the street. Therefore, I'm asking that you all deny this because safety first, and even more so, I can't think of anything. To go on Highway ninety-two between De Mooney and South Fulton Parkway until Department of Transportation improves or ridens Highway ninety-two.
Thank you. You can come on upstairs. Can you turn, can you turn the clock so I can see it, if you don't mind? Thank you, perfect. Okay. You can go ahead, sir.
How you doing? My name is Corey Smith. My address is forty-three fifty Ocur's Drive. I also support what she said about traffic, but also gas stations just bring a host of issues to our community. There's a Chevron gas station close by. There's always reports of people having guns and robbing people and they're trashing the place and throwing wings and stuff all over the place. So gas stations just harbor the wrong type of environment. And that place is closer to our community, which is off of De Mooney Road. Secondly, another gas station is being built on South Fulton, which is Quick Trip. So we would like to save the land for, for better use. It's currently zoned for agricultural. We know the future land map, um, study is being revised and should be updated. And if anything, I would, I would vote for a mixed use, but not anything that would allow a gas station. And at this point, just, you know, just based on what things are, I would say leave it the way it is until the future land use map is updated. And I'm, I'm assuming from what I'm hearing is somewhere around, uh, late January or February, and revisit this again when, when people have time to communicate what they'd like to see in their community.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Dekayla Thomas, uh, five seven six Ironstone Drive. Um, I'm opposing this primarily due to concerns regarding safety, the environmental impact, traffic, and just the similarity to existing businesses. As nice as it would be to have more juice shops and fresh fruit and vegetables, we already have that. Publix is right down the road. There's a juice place right down the road. We have enough gas stations, if I'm being honest. Um, environmentally, I know in the plan, it says that there won't be an issue because they're going to use underground tanks. Those leak, so I don't know how we can say that one hundred percent won't have an environmental impact on the community. Um, and then at the meeting that we had November fourth, the plan for traffic was for people to be polite enough to let you go. So I don't know what the current plan is as far as working with the city, but I would like to hear more about that as well.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, and thank you again for this opportunity. My name is Loretta Williams. I'm at seven four twenty-nine Genade Drive in Fairburn. And again, I'm speaking in opposition to this development for all the reasons that everyone's already talked about. The safety concerns, the environmental concern. Really seems to me that we need to be more creative than this. And what I see, and I'm not from Georgia, I'm, I'm from D.C. I relocated here fifteen years ago. What I see consistently in black communities is that's what they want to throw up, is a gas station with a, a convenience store, what he calls a C store in it. I really appreciate that this is a black developer, but can you find something else that you can put there other than a gas station? It would be great to bring in a great restaurant in that area that we can support. We have, we have money in our community, but we don't need another gas station there. So I'm against it for the development that you're seeking. And I'd like to ask the question that, uh, Representative Williams asked earlier. Would you want this down the street from your house?
Please direct yourself to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Cedric Williams. I'm at seventy-four twenty-nine Genadeen Drive in Fairburn as well. One of the things I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity. What I want to start at is, uh, everyone is talking about, or in this particular documentation, regional live work. I want that section or our area to look like this. That proposed gas station does not represent regional live work. It just does not. There are a lot of things going on here. One, of course, is the fact that yes, they traditionally do postcards and things of this nature. Quite often, it's only in a one mile radius, so therefore, um, a lot of things can be missed. In most cases, one individual represents one thousand constituents. We have about six thousand constituents standing in front of you. We are often talked about as being similar in size to Sandy Springs. Again, this live work that, that we're proposing, this is what Sandy Springs looked like, and this is what I want us to start looking like. So I'm, I'm against the, the gas station for one. Uh, the gentleman, of course, uh, also spoke about four additional, um, um, possibilities for shops. We can do those shops without a rezoning this to C one. Um, so as last statement, in, increased congestion. I went to the, uh, uh, G dot layout of, um, um, Campbellton Road for the roundabouts. It will be nothing but congestion, and that will not start until twenty twenty-eight. So I'm opposed to what this gentleman is representing as far as the gas station, and I would recommend that you not approve this, his recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Donna Gums, and I'm at seven nine nine Codex Drive, Fairburn, Georgia. And I am against a gas station as well. And I've been, I've relocated here three years ago, and to see the traffic that we have on ninety-two right by De Mooney, I was in a horrific accident there that me and my husband was carried away only after living here one year. And to see more and more increase over there just makes me feel like, how much can we stand? How many lives have to come into play? You can't cross. You can't do anything over there. You barely can just even make it through there where people are obeying the speed limit. Now, the roundabouts doesn't even help that much with that. To be honest with you, I've had people that come here from out of town who don't even know what a roundabout is, who have sit there for ten minutes until someone blows the horn at them. So they assume that everybody even know how to work that. We need more lights. It is so dark. Why even on South Fulton, we need to have a light up there? We need to look at the whole area and not what, having a gas station, knowing that that's going to add more to the problem? That's just putting flame to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I know that the applicant had a rebuttal of five minutes and fifty-eight seconds. You want to come back up?
Number one, I want to thank everybody for their input. And Ms. Gums, I'm so sorry that you got in an accident. Uh, that, that's terrible. Um, a couple of different things as a threshold matter. In terms of traffic, there will be traffic there. We are not in control of traffic. And if you improve this property at all, there will be people that come in and out of it. That's, that's the lure of South Fulton. People are coming here, building their lives here. They are coming here in droves. So traffic will be here. And from my understanding, after doing several rezonings, is roundabouts improve traffic flow, which I think is the issue, and not just congestion. So roundabout keeps the traffic moving. When you have stoplights, people stop, they have to do a full pause, and then they go, and that kind of increases congestion. So flow is important. As mentioned, we'll have D cell lanes. Another question that I think was pointed from Ms. Williams about, uh, I believe was, would I like this to be near my house? The answer is yes. I live in the west side of Atlanta. I live in Cogia Heights, um, so I'm not far away from this community. And this type of development represents the type of commercial mixed use development that I think I hear the community wanting. What I hear the community not wanting is an unkept, unmaintained gas station. And what happens with the current code is you have a bad actor in the Chevron down the street or the gas station around the corner, and you don't put a, a better development with other uses in the area that encourages other people to, to, uh, raise the level of their commus, customer community service. And so from my perspective, yes, I recognize why we don't want to just dump a gas station here, but this is not that, right? We are not coming to dump a gas station that's going to sell lottery liquor and bad food to our neighbors. This is an effort to put a gas station and a C store in a community, but at less a gas station, C store, other commercial tenants that we've heard from the community that they may want. Another important point and to, to highlight, I guess, in the discussion about uses in the neighborhood is that what we see in commercial corridors is that there, when there is limited competition from, you know, neighboring entities, folks avoid going there. They don't spend money there. And so we make no money when the community isn't safe. And so we want to partner with the city of South Fulton when it comes to flock hammers. We want to partner with, uh, the community when it comes to having adequate lighting on site and light mitigation. But we recognize that, you know, quite frankly, uh, the anchor tenant for us, the way that we can structure our deal and make sure that we're providing, uh, what we need to provide, seems to be disagreeable. But again, our goal here is to partner with tenants that provide neighborhood serving uses, not intense industrial uses. And so, uh, the general, Mr., I forget, Mr. Williams. So Mr. Williams mentioned Sandy Springs. Are, we own a gas station and C store and mixed use, uh, business in Buckhead. And so we want to bring that, a better quality, quite frankly, because we bought that one. We don't, we didn't build that one from the ground up, but a better quality development down here to South, South Fulton that is aligned to, aligned with the neighbors. We recognize that there are high income earners in the city of South Fulton. We recognize that there is a community that is young and developing. It's going to take partners like us, we think, to come in and say, we can do things differently here in a way that sets some real parameters and raises standard, but not adding it, allowing the existing uses that predate the city of South Fulton, like the Chevron and these, uh, many of these other businesses. I don't think adds to the fabric of the community, but that's our goal. And with that, I'll pause, and I'm happy to answer the commission's question.
Thank you so much. Um, give me a second, sir. We can't address you right now, okay? So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. If you don't have anything else to say, I'm going to close it. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or staff regarding, um, this application? And I, I want to go ahead and make sure we hear from District Four first, because if you have anything, I know it's in your district.
I, I see the, um, the now for the staff. I'm not clear on that. Can, can you address that?
So staff recommended denial for the rezoning and for the special use permit because we currently have a, a ordinance on the books that says gas stations can't be put in a, a three mile radius. And also they can't be put in a thousand feet of a residentially zoned, um, land. So this property, I think there's a Chevron within a half a mile, and then there's a residential property within a thousand feet. So those were our primary recommendations for the denial, for the rezoning, and for the special use permit. And then for the, uh, the comprehensive map, the future land use map, um, I think the entire area is rural neighborhood, so to introduce regional live work would be inconsistent with the surrounding, um, the, the surrounding future land uses.
You have any other questions, Commissioner Jefferson? Okay, cool. Commissioner Jones, I recognize you.
Um, did, did the applicant understand what you just said? Was that, was that shared with the applicant?
Yes. About the three mile radius?
The reason for the denial?
Yes.
Yes, they, they get the, uh, they, they get the same stuff, and it's also advertised, so they get these same staff reports.
I'm saying, when they, when they, when they applied for it, did, was there a meeting? Did they understand that this is probably not going to pass muster?
So yeah, so they attend a pre-application meeting. We go over all the rules and regulations at that time, and then they still apply. I think the applicant stated that.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think the applicant stated that, that they want to apply for the legislative waiver for the three miles, but that's done at the city council level.
Thank you.
One second, sir. Do you want, would you like to hear from him?
Yeah, I would love for him to address it.
Okay, come on back up, sir.
It's good to see you, Reverend Jones, again. Um, I, I think the last time we saw each other was in twenty fourteen when you were Reverend Wardnok at the Capitol for Chaplain of the Day. I, I believe.
I'm glad I was somewhere you could announce to everybody.
No, it's just, it's just been about ten years since I seen you. It's good to see you again. Um, in any event, um, so yes, we, we met with the sitting council person and, and expressed, you know, our concern about the legislative waiver. And so he has, one, defended the community in the sense that his concern is that there is a desire for commercial uses in the area, and it's not inconsistent with what the community is representing. And we said, we want to do something different, and we're willing to have the conversation, the difficult conversation, about what we need to do differently, because we don't think that Chevron is entitled to three miles of non-competition when they are allowing violence and trash and chicken wings to be thrown on their property. We think that we need to put a better use nearby so that people don't have to be. We think that we need to put a better use nearby so that people don't have to be forced to go to that gas station when there could be a better set of uses where they can get a coffee, they can get whatever they want, other than dealing with the Chevron on the corner that continues to make money, will continue to make money, will not change their habits. Secondarily, when it comes to our discussions with the city councilman, the general discussion about the near residential, AG1 is residential. So that means that literally everything in that peninsula, that is a triangle property, is considered residential. And right across the street, there's a public storage facility and another jurisdiction that City of South Fulton has no control over. So from our perspective, what we see on Highway 42 is an area that is going to become increasingly commercial, and the question is, how do you partner with the city to put something that is transitional in that area that perhaps was not contemplated when the city formulated its original plan? This particular piece of property sits at the gateway of the Cedar Grove Overlay District, and it borders two different jurisdictions. So, in other analogous jurisdictions, what we see is, when you're in that type of transitional area where you have potential traffic, we have potential uses, you want to put a transitional use that's lower intense. And so, our only option was to apply for a rezoning that allows us to put the commercial there. For us, the math question, making sure that we can manage a C store and fuel pumps the way we know we can manage it, because that's our bread and butter, but also have a high scrutiny for tenants, through a thorough vetting for tenants, and take seriously concerns that we hear from the neighbors about what we want to put there. With that, I'll pause. I think that there might be some additional questions from the council.
Commissioner Jones, do you have any other questions for him?
I think the argument is very compelling. I'm just concerned of setting a precedent where you come in and give us a glorious C store and gas station, and then Chevron too comes in with chicken wings and does it again. So, it just kind of forces us to really follow staff and the ordinance on this.
And so, to your point, we know that that's why the final authority lies with the city councilperson. We are also on board with adding conditions that make it clear that this is for this specific use, and those conditions to narrow and strict. If there are some offensive uses that we don't want to see, we are happy and willing to partner and say, this, you know, I use analogy, sometimes I ask my wife, what do you want to eat? And she's like, I don't know. And then I ask her what she doesn't want, and she has a very specific list of things that she doesn't want. And so, in the same way, by analogy, we know what the community doesn't want at a baseline is not another C store and gas station standalone. But we know that there might be other complimentary, other accessory uses that they might want and might not want to see outside of what seems to be offensive. So, that's our request. We are happy to, again, take recommendations to the sense that the commission or the staff has uses that they would say, that they would want to suggest. We're open to those things.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Williams, I recognize you.
Thank you. MK Energy. Did you mention that they own and operate another location in Buckhead? Is that correct?
Correct.
Do you happen to have that address?
Do we have the... 2193? Preach, Peachtree Road.
Okay.
And so, unique feature of that is that was a purchase, so that was not a development, meaning that purchased an existing one, upgraded, made some changes, added solar panels, green technology, not in the same way where you have this as a full-on development.
Okay, but it is owned and operated by MK Energy?
Yes, it is owned and operated by MK Energy.
Okay, all right. And my next question is, how will MK Energy guarantee the quality of the tenants that are coming in? Because today, we can say the fruit bar or the juice bar and the this and the that, but how can we guarantee that it's not going to be a vape shop or something else?
Well, vape shop is a very good point. So, as part of the approval, this commission can say, we want to come up with a list of conditions, approval with conditions. And so, those conditions can be no vape shops, no coin laundry, no, if there, you guys, if there's anything that comes to mind that are offensive, no, whatever shops that are offensive. You can come up with that list, and we would be legally restricted from having them as tenants. Separately, though, in terms of quality control, you know, our goal is to make sure that our tenants, we're working with the community again for specific things that they want, and if there is a tenant that isn't doing well, we don't make money, and we aren't able to continue to conduct our business. And as someone who has had to unfortunately be on the plaintiff's side of evicting commercial businesses when they don't act right or don't handle business right, it is part of the process of holding people accountable, is having very, very clear and strict leases about the quality and the services. And I've seen, and we've constructed those leases to ensure that landlords and commercial landlords especially have a straight way to eject tenants that don't do well and aren't serving the community properly. So, for example, if you have, I've evicted tenants that were selling expired food to community members in certain parts of the city because they thought they could get away with it. And as a landlord, we file suit and say, we don't want you as a tenant. And so, that's something that's important to us, is just to make sure that we're mindful and minded in the shop. And so, I can't make guarantees as a general manager, because nobody can, but I can't say we have practices and controls in place legally and otherwise. If that's sufficient answer.
Thank you. And last question. Who is Jiung Lu? There is a phone number in your paperwork here. Curious to know who is Jiung Lu. I have a reason for asking that, that's all.
I don't know. That might be the actual property owner, the actual...
We are the contract purchaser. So, just general, big overview. Normally for rezonings, you are the contract, well, not normally, in many cases for rezoners, you are the contract purchaser, meaning that your property is under contract contingent upon a rezoning. There is an existing property owner who has title, and to the extent that we are successful with this rezoning, we will close on the property so as to avoid a circumstance where we own the property and we can only use it to watch deer, because we actually want to develop it. So, I think that lady might be the actual property owner.
Interesting.
And that's par for the course for rezonings, for commercial rezonings, is that you, generally speaking, go under contract, you go through the entitlement process, and then you close, as opposed to closing and then trying to rezone.
Thank you.
Commissioner Devon, did you have anything? No?
Okay. I have a couple of comments. I'm going to say, number one, is that I'm really big on not going against the ordinance. Like, we're still a new city, and the ordinance is in place for a reason, right? You're asking for about three different things here, and you're not even meeting the requirements that are required in South Fulton, even to really, I feel like, just to even be here right now. I mean, you're parking, you're missing the landscaping, you don't have the electric parking spaces. I mean, there are just several things, even if you, you know, I mean, you're here now, but, I mean, I feel like if you come, you need to come with everything that's supposed to be in there, right? If you're coming with a request like this. So, for me, I don't vote unless there's a tie, but I can't support this right now with, one, how the plan is, the site plan, and, number two, I'm really just not a fan of the, what you guys have going on. It's the 1,000 feet, there's another gas station here down the street, and then it's abutting the ag zoning properties, the AG1. I'm not quite sure how I feel about that. I'm really not quite sure how I feel about that. So, you're coming in really hard with these three different requests here, and it's just going all against what South Fulton has put in that ordinance to protect our residents here. I'm not against gas stations, I'm not against development, but I am against people just wanting to come in and just blatantly go against the ordinance, right? And I know that you're here representing, but I have to agree with some of our citizens here that I would like to see something else as well, right? That gas station at 2193 Peachtree Road, it looks like it's a BP, right?
Yeah.
I'm not impressed right now by the pictures of it. And I have seen no aesthetics of anything, of what this gas station could even possibly look like, for us to even visually get the feel of, well, what are you guys trying to bring? So, do you have any aesthetics that you can provide?
I do. I have a presentation if you guys would like to see it.
That's if the chair will like us to take time to share this presentation, but we did not have it prior to this meeting.
We have mockups, but let me just acknowledge a couple of different things. One, you know, part of our initial outreach with the city councilperson and Madam Chair was to make sure that we were having some discussions with him about it. And we recognize that it requires a legislative waiver. I think the makeup of the city of South Fulton, the three-mile radius, is quite inclusive and broad, and I think it protects from bad actors coming in, again, dumping in the city. That's not our goal. And so, yes, as a young city, I think you absolutely have to protect from people coming in. As someone who was on the early end of the city of South Fulton formation, when I was working at the Capitol, I get it. It's important. And so, our goal here is not to just go against the residents or just go against the statue. We're asking for a waiver because we provided a compelling reason of why we want to partner with the city of South Fulton. Unlike perhaps other gas station, C stores, and uses, our goal and in our discussions with the community has been, how can we partner to bring commercial uses? Because this area will develop. The goal and the question is, what type of constructive conversations can we have? Quite frankly, that entire area, when it comes to agricultural, many other uses will have to get waivers for the 1,000-foot next to any other commercial use, will have to get the same waiver. From our perspective, we, again, our goal is to partner and figure out what type of tenants that we can have in the location. But I hear you loud and clear about the concerns for the neighbors.
Thank you so much. And I would love to see, and I'm sure my fellow board here would also love to see some photos. I know that we probably don't have time to put the presentation... Oh, can we put the presentation up? Is that up?
It's up to you, Chair, and the board.
Yeah, can we? How long does it take to do that?
It's a couple of slides, and I've got a couple of color renderings of what we planned.
Go ahead. Give me one second, sir. Commissioner Devon, I recognize you.
Can the commissioners vote on whether or not we want to take this next step?
To take a next step to view a...
Show these pictures.
I don't think that's necessary.
You don't? We don't need to agree?
To see a slideshow?
Yeah.
I don't think so. Do we need to have a vote to view a slideshow? No, we don't need to have a vote for that. And typically, I mean, this is something that usually folks have up anyways.
So, may I ask for something, given the concerns here and the questions here? We didn't get a chance to, we sent out notices to all the community members, but we hear legitimate concerns from the community. We hear legitimate questions from the commission. I would love an opportunity to potentially table this, to have a discussion and meet with them, and do a second community meeting. And if they're open to that, just to hear, if for nothing else, it provides feedback to the owner to see what other development could happen next, because ultimately, if we exit, well, that's what this will, I think you'll be pleased to see what some of these renderings might look like.
We can't take questions from the audience right now, sir. I'm sorry.
And I'll just say this also, to the extent that no matter the vote here, we will be going to city council and county commission, or city council after this, I will stand behind, and I will give you my information. If you guys have questions, comments, concerns, I won't take a cuss out, because it's been a long day, but I will listen happily and gladly, take whatever feedback you guys might have.
Huh. I know, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, are you allowing him to do his whole presentation?
No, we only want to see the renderings. Can you let her know what slide it's on?
I think it's on Slide 4, keep going. Those are renderings of what we want to do here in terms of, like, fresh food, convenience store, not the exact, these are not exact replicas of what the site plan will look like, but this is what our goal is in terms of the type of development.
Okay. Can you go to the next slide?
So, fresh food market, coffee shops, juice bars, specialty grocery stores, that's the goal for that site. It's a 3.61 acre footprint, and so, it's not a massive site, but it is a, again, neighborhood-serving type of development.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other renderings in there? We don't need to see the site plan.
No, there are no other renderings. These are kind of initial mockups. And again, this also has to comply with the Cedar Grove Overlay District, which includes a certain type of aesthetic, and so, we will comply with that aesthetic.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. At this time, if there are no other comments or questions from the commissioners, we can go ahead and work on a vote for this. Let me ask you a question, sir. Are you requesting a deferral at this point?
I think, given what we've heard from the community, we would like a deferral and be able to provide an opportunity to listen to the community a little bit more, and perhaps meet with the planning commissioners separately and hear additional feedback about what we want to avoid.
Okay, thank you so much. You can take a seat. So, commissioners, it sounds like the applicant is, of course, I mean, we've already had public hearing and all that good stuff, but at this point, we'll need to vote for approval, deny, or deferral on our end. The first thing we're going to vote on right now is staff finding a fact, so if I can get a motion on the floor.
For all...
I'm sorry. We got three of them. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, we need them separate. Okay, so we're going to do staff finding a fact, findings of fact for Z25-033. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve staff's finding of facts for Z25-033.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can I please get a roll call?
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. So now, we will move to the vote for the approval, deny, or deferral of case Z25-033 to move forward to the mayor and council meeting. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to deny case Z25-033.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. So now, we will vote on the findings of fact for U25-014. Well, actually, it's one, it was one staff report, huh? Okay, so I'll go ahead and combine this. I didn't realize that. So, let's do the staff finding of fact for, staff's finding of fact for U25-014 and CDP 25-012, because technically, they did one staff report for it, so we could have probably just done it in one.
So, I move to approve staff's finding of facts for U25-014 slash CDP 25-012.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can you please call the roll? It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, for clarity, Matthew. I was saying that for the staff finding of fact for these three cases, you guys did one staff report for three cases, so we're going to do the vote separate, but just for staff finding of fact, what were you going to say?
What was Commissioner Williams' motion, and what did you all just vote on previously?
Denial.
That was a denial.
Of what?
Of the...
Of the rezoning? Or what?
Z25-003, it was a denial.
For the rezoning? So now, y'all go vote individually on the special use permit?
Yes, yes. I got you. Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward for approval, deny, or deferral for U25-014.
I make a motion to deny Z25-033.
We're on U25-014.
Yes.
Can you redo your motion?
Make a denial motion to deny Z25-033. I'm sorry. Zero two five zero one four. I'm sorry, U25 zero one four.
Is there a second?
I second that motion to deny U25 dash zero one four.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. And our last case is CDP twenty-five dash zero twelve.
Madam Chair, one of order.
Sure.
Just confused, because I was thinking that they were requesting a deferral. Are we going to have discussion, or we just going through with the vote? No discussion, just vote?
Well, so, technically, he did, he technically would like a deferral, but the motion that was called was for denial, so her motion went, was passed, so, yeah. Because it didn't fail, so, yeah.
Yeah, they wanted to do a motion to defer when we already, we'd already, the rezone, we'd already...
Yeah. But if she, Commissioner Williams threw out the motion to deny, but if the motion would have failed, then that would have given opportunity for someone else to throw out that deferral. And for CDP twenty-five dash zero one two, can I get a motion for approval, denial, or deferral?
I make a motion to deny CDP twenty-five dash zero one two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Reverend Jones?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Devon?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you so much. So, this case, all three of these cases will be moved forward to the December ninth mayor council meeting. And we did have one more item that was added on the agenda, and we can just talk about this really, really quickly. This is going to be for our planning commission rules. All of us have a planning commission rules in our binders. I will get staff to email out the planning commission rules. Our next meeting is going to be on December seventeenth here at Wacomaw Park. So, it's going, we're going to have a month from today to actually go through these rules, redline them, so that we can actually pretty much, you know, fix them up, get them, get them, get them where they need to be. I think it's been some years since these planning commission rules have been really revised. So, I think as a commission, part of our duty here in the City of South Fulton is to be a top-tier board, and that also means to have rules that work for the board and rules that work for the city. So, again, from today into our next meeting, which is going to be on December seventeenth, we'll have a month to review these rules, redline them, mark them up, so that we can actually come together as a commission and actually go through and tidy these things up, so we can get these passed before hopefully top of the year, and keep going strong as a commission. Staff, do you have anything for us?
Absolutely. As mentioned, the rules are in the binder. Feel free to take those out and take them with you. You know, I don't have to email them to you. You could just take those hard copies and do whatever you want to.
I also have a question for you, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do you want us to put an amendment of the rules on the next agenda?
Yes. Let me, let me, actually, let me talk through that, let me talk with you guys about that offline to see, because I think that we're going to have quite a few amendments, and I don't want us to have prolonged too much time in the meeting. But let's talk about that offline so we can figure out the best way to do it. I just know that these rules definitely need to be revised.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Jones, I recognize you.
Can we read or add Commissioner Paulette Devon's birthday into the minutes?
Absolutely. And before we get out of here, we have to recognize our very own Paulette Devon, who is also serving as the vice chair of the commission. It is her birthday today, and she is here proudly serving the City of South Fulton. So, happy birthday, Commissioner Devon.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to see you all tonight. We look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Please continue to show up. Don't forget about voting. December second is the runoff. So, go out and vote, and, oh, I'm sorry. And that's all. And Commissioner Devon, I recognize you.
I have a question for staff. Matthew, if you would... I was kind of confused on that last case where all of the information was before us, and the denial was before us, and the reason for doing so. And all of that was in writing, and it's here, but at the ninth hour, the gentleman wanted to show his pictures or whatever he wanted to show. And the question was placed only to the chair, whether or not we view those. And I'm trying to understand if that's the direction in which we're going, or would the commissioners have any say so if that, if that comes before us again?
I think in terms of doing a presentation, that's one thing, but just to show the pictures, I think if it's within his presentation time, or if there's allotted time for him. But I think if you wanted to give a full presentation, that would extend like five or 10 minutes, that would be a vote of the body. But I think it was up to the chair's discretion to allow him to show the pictures.
Okay, I need to know that. Thank you.
And just going forward, if staff doesn't mind, if you guys would be so kind to just ask those applicants when they arrive if they do have their presentation, just so that we don't, you know, we can have that in advance. I know that typically, from my understanding, you guys typically do ask them for presentations and things of nature. But if you don't have one and they are here, if you don't mind just doing a little extra work and just ask them if they do, just so we can save that time there. I appreciate y'all.
And I think in his case, he could have just shown that presentation during his allotted time.
Absolutely.
And that could have avoided everything.
Totally agree. I appreciate y'all. Okay. Well, it is 7:57 PM, and we are going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Y'all have a good evening. Oh, I'm sorry. We got to have a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Oh, I need you in the mic.
Oh, moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded by a raise of hands. Let's close this meeting out. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned at 7:58 PM. See y'all next month.